Order and start with the budget.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first couple of public comments. One of these days she will take us up on that.
She doesn't qualify as public. She's not from Newmarket.
Petitioners.
Oh, that's true.
Not seeing anyone across the board. Head right into board comments and committee updates. I don't have anything.
Well, Budget Committee had the last meeting on Monday night before the public hearings, which are on January the 6th. Both the school district and the town, you know, the Budget Committee was good enough to provide a list of questions in advance and the school district and the town both offered their responses to those questions. And that should really be it until the public hearings. January the 6th.
That was great. Board members, your support.
Mm-hmm.
I meant to go last night. Anyone else?
Policy Committee gathered, we can go today, to discuss the policies that we have in front of us.
All right, head right into, I don't know, public correspondence, I'm aware of anyone who's seen today.
I have not seen anything.
All right, head to student, excuse me, Student Representative Report.
Okay, for girls, basketball, they won their game versus Messineck forty-four to sixteen. And they also have a home game tonight at five thirty versus Wilton Lindenboro. And the theme is ugly sweaters. Boys' basketball also won their game at Messineck fifty-four to forty-seven. And they also have a home game tonight at seven versus Wilton Lindenboro. And the theme is also ugly sweaters. JV boys' basketball is doing good. On the tenth, they beat Newt fifty-six to twenty-six. On the thirteenth, they beat Oyster River thirty-one to twenty-six as well. Swim had a meet last Saturday, and their third meet is this Saturday at Lips Exeter, and that will begin at nine. Hockey had their first game Tuesday versus Goffstown, and they lost one to nine. But their next game is Saturday versus Coop Brown slash Summersworth at eleven-thirty. Indoor Track also had their first meet last Saturday. Some shout-outs, Amelia got first in the fifty-five hurdles. Ailis got first in the fifteen hundred. Magnolia placed third in the one thousand. And then girls' team placed sixth overall, and boys' team placed ninth overall. Their next meet is Saturday, the twenty-eighth, at UNH. As for clubs, Student Council, SALT, and National Honor Society all went caroling at the Pines yesterday for like an hour. It was very, we were great, I think. It's a little hot in there, but it's fine. Student Council also made holiday cards for the residents of the Pines. SALT, as of a few hours ago, apparently, we are also selling these shirts for the basketball games tonight, five dollars. Bring some money. Interact, they baked cookies for the food pantry. And National Honor Society also just completed Adopt a Family. So we took five families, we got gifts for families, and then we wrapped them, and that was all finished this week. And then Band had their winter concert last Wednesday, and I heard great things about that. So, it's a lot to go.
Thank you very much. Want to talk to you?
Yes, I do. But I did want to just first say, it's always so oppressive this time of year when you start hearing all the community service stuff, the kids are involved in. It's really, it's really awesome to see. It really starts in the fall with a lot of things.
Yeah.
But it's, there's a lot going on, a lot of ways that students are giving back to the community, so I think that's great. Just a couple of things I wanted to report on. As Dan mentioned, I presented, actually, the last two Monday nights to the Budget Committee. The first one was to share basically the budget narrative in our presentation, and the second one was to answer their questions. They asked some, some good questions that I, I want to just kind of go over with you a little bit, just because I haven't shared the information that answered those questions in the way that I shared it with them, with the board. But it was in answering the question, and by the way, I'll share with, use my PowerPoint after this so you can see it. But basically, they asked three questions. One, they asked about average, average pupil costs. One of the questions took a look at, took, looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, taking our total dollar budget amount and dividing that by the number of students projected, and asked why our per pupil cost was so much more than the state average. And so one of the things I explained to them is that the way the state calculates averages, extracts transportation costs, tuition for out-of-district placements, as well as SST costs, as well as food service costs and revenues. So when you get down to it, the, if you, the assessment that was made based upon the calculation I just described, that the, the Budget Committee made, used the entire amount, and the question was, why is, why are we forty percent higher than the state average? And to be clear, we're not. For the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which was the one that the data is most recently available for, the state average was twenty thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars per pupil, and in Newmarket, we were twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars per pupil. Again, I'll share this PowerPoint with you, and if you're really dying, you can always watch the, the Budget Committee meeting to see the whole thing. So there is no question, there's about a twenty-five hundred dollar difference. But one of the things I did remind the Budget Committee of was, we are unique, and that we took on a very substantial bond a few years ago. And if you take just the cost of the bond, the per pupil cost of the bond is well over two thousand dollars a child. So the differential, while we are certainly slightly above state average, we're not dramatically above state average. And one of the things that I wasn't able to show, because the state hasn't released its twenty-three, twenty-four numbers yet, is that our budget only grew, or our per pupil cost only grew by two point nine percent from twenty-three to twenty-four. The state has historically gone up at a rate of four point eight percent or more. So my presumption is we'll be even closer to the state average in twenty-three, twenty-four, and maybe even more so the following year. So I just, that was something that I explained, and again, I will share the PowerPoint, whether you have that information. The other question they asked about, we talked a lot about student services and costs of student services, as we did in our budget presentations as well. And one of the things that they were really focused on was, if you, again, if you take our total student services budget and divide it by the number of students that we serve, they came up with a number that was very high. But again, the real impact is in out-of-district placements, and that is a very small subset of our total student population. So we spend almost one point two million dollars a year in out-of-district placements. And so when you remove that from the calculation, and by the way, the other thing you have to remove is the cost that we pay to provide student services for students who do not attend Newmarket. So there are students who go to, for example, Great Bay Charter School, that we are responsible for providing student services for. And we spend about seventy-five thousand dollars a year providing services for those students. Again, I'm not saying this because I don't want to provide those services, I just want people to understand that it's real dollars that we have to pay. So when you remove those costs, along with transportation costs out of the student services budget, our numbers are much more close, I mean, it certainly costs more to educate students that are on an IEP than it does the general population, but it's only five or six thousand dollars a kid more. And for the most part, that's the cost of hiring a case manager to manage the issue. And then the, the other thing that I explained to them too was, the state expanded eligibility for services from age twenty-one to age twenty-two, and that does have an impact as well. And they, the first year, twenty-three, the state did increase funding to compensate. They did not do it in the last year. So when the, when reimbursements were given to Newmarket, and frankly, every, everybody in the state experienced the same thing, but we were shorted by almost two hundred thousand dollars of what should have been provided to us. So the cost, the impact is pretty significant. So again, I'll share with you that PowerPoint, but I just wanted to kind of review that with you. But anyway, I did, I really appreciate the Budget Committee's questions. They were good questions. It showed they were very, very much trying to understand what's going on, and I think for the most part, they're very supportive of the budget we presented. Second thing I just wanted to mention, and when we get the technical advisory from the DOE about this, we'll, I'll come back and talk to you more. But actually, Phil may be able to inform us more, that the State Board of Ed approved the three oh sixes last week, and with that come changes to the state minimum standards. Patty did a really nice memo to staff, just to, because people are wondering, what's, what's this going to mean, how's it going to impact us? And we're taking the approach, and we're going to wait until we get the technical guidance from the DOE to kind of sort that out. But really, ultimately, what we're trying to communicate is, the, the intention of many of these changes is to provide more flexibility, and they are minimum standards. And so we're not going to just be minimums. We're going to look at them, and we're going to use them as ways to make sure we better meet students' needs. So I just want to put that out there. So there will need to be some look at our graduation credit requirements, because the total number of credits is not going to change, but how they're distributed has changed, so we'll need to take a look at that. So anyway, just wanted to mention that. And again, I think at some point in the near future, when we have more specifics, we should probably have a conversation at the board table. Last thing I wanted to just mention is, as a follow-up to last board meeting, Sean, Patty, and I met with the, the NES PTA's outdoor advocacy group, was seven very passionate community members. It was a, it was a really, really good meeting. We really, I think there's a lot of, they, they shared kind of what their thoughts were. We kind of gave them more information about our program. We've decided we're going to continue to meet. We've scheduled another meeting in January to kind of follow up and have more conversation. In the meantime, Sean's going to collect a little more information from his teachers. Ultimately, they sort of defined a short-term goal of, they would like to see more recess time. There's no question, that's, that's what they're looking for. But I think ultimately, they're looking for more opportunity for outdoor learning experiences and opportunities, and we're going to see what we can do with that, and, and see how we can, you know, accomplish that, but at the same time balancing it with the other academic needs we need to meet. So, that's all I have.
Can you just go back to repeat the numbers for the student, for pupil, for the state
So then, in twenty-two, twenty-three, the state average, state was twenty thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars per pupil.
Okay.
Newmarket was, the same year, twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars per pupil.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have to say, Todd did, did a fantastic job covering those questions and radicalizing the Budget Committee against the state legislature, so very well done on all fronts.
Could I just get a little clarification?
Sure.
On the one point two million dollars for out-of-district tuition, or?
Placement cost, yep.
Placement cost. That's exclusive of non-special ed out-of-district placements?
Correct.
But special ed and SST isn't that number?
Yeah, there's a separate, separate cost for tuition in other areas. This is out-of-district placements for the purposes of student services identification. So we, remembering off the top of my head, and I don't have the number right in front of me, it's about one million one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars is what's budgeted for next year for out-of-district placement costs. And a big chunk of the increase in that is the fact that we did not get from the state what they had promised to us, and so we have to compensate for that. So our internal numbers have to go up. And so, like I said, we, we were shorted by about two hundred thousand dollars from the state. And by the way, across the state of New Hampshire, public schools were shorted by sixteen point four million dollars in reimbursements for special education. And that's, I mean, I have my theories about that, but that'd be getting political, I'm just going to get off the mic.
May I clarify that? That was a really good question, Gary. Placements out of our district has nothing to, there's no special ed class in that? They're around?
No, that's, that is all special ed. These are, these are students that, when, when they're going through the IEP process, it has been determined that the best placement for them is a, is a out-of-district site.
Right, I get that, but I wasn't, when you just said that.
So those costs. Well, there are other twi, I think what Gary was saying is, there's other tuition costs we pay. So we pay SST tuition to the tune of two hundred and eighty or ninety thousand.
And that's included at one point?
Yeah. So when we do, when you do the average per pupil cost, you do take out the SST tuition.
Okay.
But when I was saying the special ed part of it, that was not included.
Okay, thank you.
No, great. I don't want to steal thunder on introductions.
Sure.
Do you want, do you want to do it, or I can do it? Go ahead.
Well, sure. I, Stephanie, Stefan? Hi, Stefan? I can't see over the podium. Stephanie Clary is, I know she is, and I really appreciate, because I know that, as we joked before, she's not feeling a hundred percent, so please be kind. But thank you for being here tonight. As, as the board knows, we've been talking about the Industrial Technologies Program, and sort of some of the things that we're doing that fit that sort of pre-engineering kind of idea. And Stephanie has a lot of background in this, and she's been really providing a great program to our kids, so I asked her to come on in and share with us kind of what she's doing, and kind of what her vision is for the program that she is running. So give us that background. Stephanie, thank you for being here, and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, thank you for having me. So yeah, I'm Stephanie Clary. I am teaching the middle school STEAM courses. This is the second year that we are, have been running sixth, seventh, and eighth grade of middle school STEAM. I also, my background is high school, so I also teach technology and business courses here in Newmarket as well. So what I'm going to talk about today is the importance of STEAM in education. So that includes science, technology, engineering, art, and that all come back into one, so that students can see the relevance of kind of what they're learning in hands-on activities, project-based learning. I will talk about what I'm teaching in my middle school STEAM courses in grade six through eight, and I also am going to talk about some of the progression that we already have set up here at Newmarket, from the middle school courses to the high school courses. And then I have somewhat of a vision for Newmarket, junior, senior high school, I think, too, as well. So that's what we're going to talk about today. And I found a dino-ormous robot, which she doesn't love, a dino-ormous robot. So yeah, that's from my new eighth-grade robotics selected course, so, which I will talk about. But first, I want to talk about why STEAM and education. And I feel passionate about it, it's my background. I come from Barwick Academy, I ran their fabrication studio for a few years, and I also taught computerated design at York High School, where I also started Maker Space. So I've done this a couple times. But, you know, I think that it's very important, because it really brings into perspective career fields, as well as skills that students are going to use in life. So these are the skills that we talk about all the time in STEAM, critical thinking, creativity, collaboration. We want students to be curious, problem solvers, communicate with other people, even if they don't feel comfortable always working with them. So this is, we basically go by all of these skills, which I think are transferable. And I also wanted to show a quick video, Ken Robinson, and it just kind of talks about the importance of students working with their hands and being creative. So I'll just show this real quick. And hopefully, there's not, and it's great in STEAM class, and you'll see from some of my, my pictures. Really, students are not sitting in their seat ever. And, you know, it, some might say it's a little bit chaotic, but to be honest, if you walk in my classroom and talk to the students and ask them what they're doing, they're going to be excited, and they're learning, and they could tell you exactly what, what they're doing. So, so anyways, here is just a quick, brief video, hopefully it sounds like.
Uh-oh.
I didn't test, sorry, Todd. I should have probably mentioned that I had some videos in my presentation. Well, that's okay. Maybe we can...
Tell you what, what we can do is, we can send the videos to the board, and maybe they can watch them on.
Sure, that sounds great. I was going to watch the entire video.
Yep.
So, and the other videos that I have, students, there is no sound, so. So in all of my courses, including the middle school STEAM courses, we talk about the design thinking framework. So I like this framework better than the engineering design process, because no matter where students go, they can take this with them. It's important, especially now, we, that students learn how to empathize with other people, not only to understand the challenge that's in front of them, but also to kind of put themselves in other people's shoes, because really, our world is kind of moving towards human-centered design. And we really have to kind of practice getting out there and having our students talk to people they don't necessarily feel comfortable talking to, and, you know, having them hopefully understand some of the problems they might be facing. So we all, we talk about this framework, and I use it to structure everything that we do. And it doesn't have to just be for design. You can use this, this framework in an organization for leadership. You can use this framework, businesses are using this framework, which some of you probably already know, and it was developed by the Stanford Design School. So after we empathize, we have to really define what the problem is, or problems are. And then the important, the three important steps that we go through all the time in my courses are, we have to brainstorm ideas, we come up with potential solutions, and then we create a prototype. So, you know, the prototypes are just kind of used as a test, this is what it could look like, doesn't have to necessarily be the exact materials. And then we kind of get feedback, right? Right now, you know, feedback is mostly from myself, the other students, maybe in the form, hopefully, soon, of like a community-type, you know, presentation, not like science fair, but just a place where they can kind of get feedback from other people, and ultimately, the people that we're empathizing with is, you know, the hope. So I encourage students to go through the process and ideate often, as many times as they want to and need to, to make the best out of they can. So in my courses, I really try to make a supportive classroom and community, and I start off every course, the middle school courses are quarter-long courses, but it's kind of nice, because I get to know the students throughout the years. And I often, you know, try to make sure that I'm very approachable for students, and I tell them, fail fast and fail often. And I'm the only class that you might hear that in, but I think it's so important, because that's where the learning happens. That's where, you know, we're iterating, we're coming up with different ideas, this didn't work, I need to do this better. And really, I feel like everyone has the capacity to be creative. And if we're not taking risks, and we're not allowing students to fail, then they're not going to be creative. And in our society, right now, we need people to be creative. That's probably. So that's kind of my framework that I use. In sixth grade STEAM, we talk a lot about electricity, and they understand the properties of electricity and electrical charges, as well as electrical circuits. So this is a picture of the sixth graders, and we're using a microcontroller called Miki Miki. And basically, a Miki Miki is a device that you can use, you can use conductive material to turn anything into a key on your computer. So right here, you can see the piano. And so we have one student holding on to like a grounding device, which we call Earth. And all of the students are actually connected, because humans are conductive. So they're touching each other's hands, just kind of on the top of their hands, all the way around the room, and the last student is playing the piano. And this is really fun, the students really are shocked to see this, actually. And so just recently, actually, I have a fairly small, really great group of sixth graders right now, and so they wanted to make a piano stairs. And so Tuesday, I think it was, we made piano stairs. And it was pretty great to see everyone's reaction, because they were shocked. And all the students were like, you can step on it. To the high school students and the teachers, and they're like, go ahead, step on it. And like, everyone was just kind of like, oh, I don't know, I don't agree with it. And there was just, it was really just cardboard, we used some balsa wood, tin foil, and we connected our Miki Miki, connected our Miki Miki to a computer. And it was really cool, and kind of like a fun activity, the students were so excited. So I try to let the students choose and be creative with the project that they do as often as I can. So you know, the hope is that students will be able to design and build functions. and build functional electrical circuits once they leave the class. They'll definitely be using their critical thinking and problem-solving skills. And you know, it's important, of course, that we also work safely with the electricity. Even though the students do want me to test things that I don't feel comfortable testing and I don't do it, but they always wear safety glasses and we just make sure that they know what not to touch and touch together. So this is, these are some pictures of some students' creative designs using Play-Doh. And Play-Doh is conductive. And they also use some clay as an insulator so that they can connect LEDs to light up their creatures. So I kind of like give them a challenge and they do it. So they come to develop not only just light up the creatures, but they create switches using the Play-Doh. And they also create different types of circuits. So, and they love it. It's fun. They're engaged and they're having fun. This is another example of the fan-powered cars that I do. And you can see how excited the students are. They used a motor, so we talked about the transfer of electricity. And they're powering their car using a little fan. And a lot of them realize, as you can see, that if they put their hand behind the fan... Yeah, so it is a lot of fun. We also talk about engineering design and some robotics in sixth grade curriculum right now. So again, we go through the design process. And we do go through some programming basics. We use Ozo blocks at, I'm sorry, Ozo bots. This is called an Bozo bot, but Ozo bots. And we, it's, you can program them, as you can see right here, using black lines and color codes. So it reads a color sensor as well as the black line sensor. And we also program using blockly. So there's an Ozo blockly and it's just like any other coding. In fact, it looks a lot like the coding that we do in eighth grade for the Lego robotics. So they, they get to design cool things. This, this is a roller coaster. And they made, you know, they made it go through tunnels and light up and change colors and spin around and they were super excited about it. So I also try to talk to them about, you know, how to document their process. And I have every student have a design notebook or an engineering design notebook where I tell them it's okay if at the end, your project doesn't work because what I'm looking at is the process that you used. I want to see your collaborating with your partners. I want to see that you're communicating well, that you're participating, you're problem-solving. And they get it. And so I, you know, if they, last year I had a lot of students question, "My car didn't work. Am I going to fail?" No, you tried to get it to work as much as you could and that's what I'm looking for in our project. So you know, as they kind of go through my classes, they'll understand that and become more comfortable even, I think. And then, so I'm hoping that students can, you know, kind of know about some basic programming, be able to document their process in their design notebooks, use the materials for prototyping, and also kind of learn about some of the sensor, sensors and robotics parts that... So even the little Ozo bots, that's a, that's a dance party. Even the little Ozo bots, they have everything that a real, regular, large robot would have, even though they're tiny. So there's our dance party. And then these are some art bots which are spinning around. And these are using motors, just kind of like the cars. And they need to kind of set the top of their motor and have it be off-balanced somehow so that the robot can move. And we talk about balance and how the robot is moving and what happens if it is balanced. So I think they have a lot of fun with it. So that's sixth grade. Seventh grade STEAM, we are talking about forces or we talk about forces in motion, laws of motion. We talk a lot about force, mass, acceleration, gravity, inertia. And we also kind of create diagrams. We have demonstrations to kind of test all of these theories. So some of the projects that we've done are... This, this was one that I did last quarter. And they're, they are putting, it's an egg car. And you can see that that student probably should, our students, they most often work in partners. Probably should have had a seatbelt sign in that car because the egg fell out. And so, so this learning lesson, we talked about that. And then, let's see. This is, this past quarter, I found some Lego mind forms in the library. So they're just an older version of the Lego robotics mind kits that we're using in eighth grade. And so we had the students, we did a speed race where students had to set some gear ratios to determine, to try to race the fastest robot and have the fastest robot. And then, so then we did some low gear ratios where students had to push as much weight as possible. So it was kind of a, it was a great test of like trial and error. And students really kind of engaging in what they were doing. So I did not have them program it. You know, we're getting there. It's like, this is only the second year. I just loaded the program and downloaded the same program onto Eropa's robot. So it was really a test of their, their skills of acceleration and setting that up through gear ratios. Another unit that we cover is construction science. And so we talk about kind of the basics of structural design, load, tension, and then how to kind of incorporate and interpret scale drawings and design something to scale. So this was a bridge project that we did. And the students created the scale model of the structure. And you can see that the structure of the left, on the left-hand side, which is also the same bridge as we do on the right-hand side, it really took a lot of weight. We had to put some water bottles on it before we could get it to collapse. So students did a really good job of, you know, designing the bridge to pull as much weight as possible. And then some, the eighth grade robotics. Again, this is the first year, first semester that we're running this. And so we talk all about sensors, hubs, the hub for the robot prime and how we can work with the hub to make, to make our robot a little bit, work with the code a little bit better. You know, basic programming and we go through the design process as well. So this is another monster robot. So in the first quarter of the semester, I used some of the Lego Spike Prime lessons that they provide you with some of, and they give you some of the code that students would then have to change. And so that's kind of how I introduced students to the Lego robotics, where they would go through the building, you know, they'd go through the directions for building. And I originally thought, "Oh, kids are going to hate this." They actually loved it. And then the second quarter, or even before the second quarter because these students are super motivated and I like them to choose their own projects. So this project, as well as the robot he saw, probably should have had a little bit more restrictions on it, but it was like a sumo bot type challenge where, you know, the demolition derby style in a robot, like a little ring. And so students were trying to push the other robot. Again, we're using gears to try to push the other robot and deter the other robot so that they can move backwards and pin them against the wall was the challenge. So really, I, you know, these students are so motivated that we, our deadlines just keep getting put back. Because they're like, "I want to try this. I want to try this. I want to try this. Oh, but I want to use this weight." And so, yeah. And it's really cool to see. And then we have, oh yes, this student in particular is very good with code. And this robot that you see in the video is actually solving Rubik's Cube.
Oh my God.
So he built this. He did have, there was, there was some online help, but he actually found it himself, wanted to do this. And he didn't participate in the sumo challenge because he was so interested in this. And I was like, "It's a really great coding challenge for you."
I can't solve a Rubik's Cube myself. I can't imagine programming something else to do it.
It actually scrambled it and it solved it.
Wow.
And yeah, so you know, I like to make sure students are challenged. And you know, if the students are challenged, he would have been challenged in the sumo bot too. But this was more his speed. He really likes to code. So it's very, it's very cool and he was very, very, very proud of it when he got it to work. It's pretty cool to see. And then, so yeah. Really, the whole, the whole process is to kind of debug, right? Like what's wrong? Test. I always tell students, you know, test often. Let's fail. Let's figure it out. And this, this work, this is a project that we're currently working on. And a little bit of hindsight, making quite a mess, being great students. But they wanted to do an ice cream sundae bar where basically the, we have groups of students working on five different robots to create an ice cream sundae. So of course, there's Scoop the Bowl. So we scoop the ice cream sundae. This is the goal. This is, this is kind of like their final product. We scoop the ice cream sundae, put it into a bowl, put it onto a car, one of the robot cars that drives. Where the goal is to put some tape down, excuse me, so the driving car can sense the tape. When it senses the tape, it'll stop. And that's where the cream will go into play. And so when the robot stops, the, the robot kind of lined up on the assembly line will sense that the robot is there and dispense with the cream, which is maybe a whole mess. And then we have, we have a chocolate dispenser. We also have a, excuse me, let's see, sprinkles dispenser. And then the last thing is a cherry dispenser. So the cherry dispenser is all good to go. The driving robot is pretty good to go. Students really just, this is a really great challenge for them to all collaborate together, which this group actually did a great job with. And like I said, they're, they're motivated and I don't have to get them to, you know, iterate through the process. They just do it themselves. And it's so great to see. I mean, I feel like sometimes I don't need to be there at this point. And then, let's see what this video is. Okay, so this was one of the first projects that we did where we were testing out all of the different sensors and the buttons. So this is actually a button and we called this project, or I called this project Wall Racers. It's one of the Spike Prime projects that we did. So students can kind of become familiar with the different sensors and controls of the robot. And my goal, and I've used it a little bit this, in this semester, but I don't know if all of my students will be quite as motivated as the students I have now. So I'm going to incorporate the Scrum Agile process so that students can become familiar with that. And it's kind of like becoming a head in education now as well, you know, it's used in the business world. So just to kind of move projects along a little bit faster too. So we're not extending all of the due dates. Even though I think it's great that they want to keep trying and make them the best that they can, you know, I, I think it'll hold students accountable a little bit better too when they're working in groups. And then my, I am proposing a new eighth-grade elective, which I did, I sent the write-up to Annie, I think. I don't know if I sent it to Patty, but I probably should. And it's called Pinball Wizard. We have this as an elective in, I taught at Barre Academy. And it teaches digital fabrication. And what's great about these two eighth-grade electives in particular is that, you know, students are old enough to kind of have that learning. They're the center of the learning, right? They're creating their pinbox. They're creating their robot. No two are alike, as you can see, you know, once they learn the basic skills. And so it really emphasizes the creative process. And so students are curious to want to add different things, different components to their, to their embalaging. And you know, it also will kind of have a little bit of a review or an extension to, I'm sorry, three laws of motion. So that will be incorporated into the class as well. And so, you know, these types of classes are great because I can teach for the first few minutes of class. And they are short classes, but I can teach for the first few minutes. And then students are just off on their own. They're doing and learning and questioning. And I can kind of walk around and guide and help to kind of inspire them to, and push them a little bit. So the, the Pinball Wizard would be, a lot of digital fabrication students would be able to use computerated design software. I would use Inventor. We also, we have a, a croquet where students could make stickers or we could use CorelDraw. And to kind of, they would have to learn how to put the pinbox together, which is engineering skills in and of itself. And then they'd have to design using digital fabrication. I personally believe that every student should know CAD because I truly believe that someday, everyone will have a ready printer in their house. I have two sitting in my classroom. We have a couple in the library. And it's just kind of the way of the world. You can download anything from the internet, which I cannot. And you can print it, which I don't let students do because that's not learning. But it's, I think it's important for students to learn these digital, excuse me, digital fabric skills. And so, and the hope would be, you know, that maybe possibly someday, I have kind of mentioned it, to write a grant, purchase a laser cutter, but I don't know where, again, where it would go. But I did notice, not to put a blurb or anything, but I did notice that there are some venting systems in, actually, quite a few venting systems in the old shop space or, not old, it's brand new. But I did notice that it would be a great place to have a laser cutter because it's already vented. And that's the expense, right, is to vent it. And venting it out the window really isn't very healthy for people in that space. So yeah, and then if you wanted to, you know, went to the presentation and shared with you, my Pinball Wizard course is written in this right here if you wanted to take a peek at it. So, and then with the high school course offerings, that is kind of like a continuation of middle school STEAM. I offer an architectural drafting and design course. We use Autodesk Revit software, which is an industry-known architectural software used in industry now. We do 3D solid modeling. That's another course that I offer using Inventor software, which is also used in business today. And then I also teach a 2D computerated design course using the traditional, you know, Autodesk, Autodesk software. And then my colleague Tiffany Brand also teaches a Python programming course. And so these are some treehouses where students learn how to frame. In my architectural drafting course, they use Revit to come up with their creative designs and then, excuse me, print the plans to then frame the treehouses. They like the project. It's great. You know, sometimes a little nails, get a little bit tedious. And then I also put a video from, this was actually a student-designed project where he took my course, he took CAD and then he was, loved it so much that he flew through all of the computerated design material in one quarter. And so I taught him 3D solid modeling in the next quarter, in the next quarter because it's a semester-long course. And he goes home, buys a 3D printer, comes back and shows me his automata, I think that's how you pronounce it, where you can see how amazing it is. Printed it in separate parts that he then put together, which by the way, is very difficult to do. And so this was, this is probably, this is the most impressive student print, 3D print I've ever seen. And I've been at it for a while. And so we also have pretty cool, you know, design competitions. And we do mini car, 3D printed mini car races in my 3D solid modeling course where students can use... printed mini car races in my 3D solid modeling course where students can use 3D printers. Well, actually, they send me their file and I look it to the 3D printer. But you know, it's, it's exciting for them to see their work on the computer actually come to life in 3D print. And then my vision, like I said, I were hoping to get robotics, at least the building part of, and like the engineering part of robotics into the sixth grade to kind of introduce it a little bit sooner, you know, rather than just waiting till eighth grade, at least to the STEAM courses. And so Patty's actually writing a grant for that, but she's written a grant and submitted it to get those, their Lego as well, for the sixth grade course. And then, you know, my vision for the future, I don't know if we'll get there anytime soon or if it's even possible, but you know, I'd love to see the STEAM course integrated with the core courses. So that students can really see their projects come to life, what they're learning in, make it more relevant for them. So, you know, it's a more of an authentic experience, I think, because they get that in STEAM and then they travel to their other courses. And, you know, I don't know if they can quite make the connection that we're using math or using science or using technology. And then, you know, the hope is to make, to have more students and teachers become excited about creating and the possibility of kind of gravitating towards our library maker space to kind of experiment, test things. You know, we have a maker club and the kids get really excited about using 3D pens and, you know, just having more project based learning maybe to, we have a bunch of materials. Whenever I'm out of something, I just call the library and I just have a student run down and get it for me. So it's a, it would be a great kind of community space where people would gather. And then Tiffany and I have talked about offering additional high school courses. So Vex Robotics course would be great, I think. Excuse me. So she is more skilled with programming, I'm more skilled with building and the 3D printing. And so we talked about potentially writing a course up to teach Vex Robotics as a course. A lot of schools have robotics as a course in the engineering type class. And then hopefully we can get more students to turn to high school and compete in some competitions. And I was going to show the most likely to succeed trailer. I don't know if any of you have seen most likely to succeed. It's, it's actually fairly old, but very relevant. And it just kind of shows like students working with their hands, putting projects together and going through that design process that I talked about. So, and that's all I have. So thank you. And I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. This is, I, I work with seventeen's every day using Agile and fail fast. Like I was joking, fail fast, but we fix slowly, which is a problem in my business. But yeah, the bug game program, yeah, every day. So that's great. Amazing.
So I love project based learning. I love, the kids are learning without even realizing they're learning, that it feels like playing a game or having fun, making robots, that, I think so much like, I know those are focused on the technical skills, but the human skills they're learning, working as teams, is just like unparalleled, I'm sure, in your experience.
Absolutely.
That, are there other places that we're using project based learning across? And this is probably not a question for you, sorry. They're already guys like, like are there other places where like leveraging project based learning as a tactic?
I would say, sorry.
You want to come up and answer that question?
I would say individually, individual teachers.
Yeah, you might come up to the microphone for the thousands and thousands of home.
Yes, I would say yes. Individual teachers from all the way pre, kindergarten all the way through high school, there's elements of project based learning. I know with my literacy program, one of the components of it that a lot of us were drawn to is the last week is a project based learning activity where it's taking all of the skills and concepts from the whole unit and then the culminating project is a, is a project based learning project. This year, we can't even talk about it. But that is when the teachers are looking through the units that they're really excited about. So absolutely, I feel like there's, there's lots of specific pockets of project based learning for sure going on.
Yeah, I, I love what you're doing. I think it's fantastic and I, I.
It's impressive.
The human design process, the D school stuff, like we, I use that at work all the time, like that is the fail fast concept. It is so, it's going to be so generalizable across whatever field people get into. And recognizing that STEAM fields are really where most of the, second half of the 21st century jobs are probably going to be in.
I just really speak like to the collaboration, these different kids working teams. I mean, that is such a skill that all of our students and we take into adulthood, you know, working collectively.
Thank you for what you're doing. It was amazing.
No, thank you. I didn't question, and I only know as far as that my kids have been there, because my son's in fourth grade, but I know that they just need an hour of code and then Makers' Empire, which is completely printing, but it takes a very different like approach in terms of guiding and games and activities. Have you like noticed that some kids do have a little bit of like, I don't, I guess it would be, it would have to be two years before my son is in fourth grade. But I just think that they are getting some at Newmarket Elementary School. They don't even recognize sometimes that it's, because they start with WACS in terms of coding language. But I, I have seen their, the seventh graders, when I introduced some mindstorms, they remember to see them in elementary school. Yep. So I can see a lot of overlap from that circuit. They do have closed circuits and it's kind of, some of it is a review, but some of it is new, which I think is good too.
And even the Makers' Empire, even if they don't end up, because I had connected with Laura Bascom about 3D printing, plug for her, she's actually why my school has Makers' Empire because of my son participating in it. But that, you know, it's such a great base for the later ones like Tinkercad and I assume CAD, not that I have experience with it.
We actually are not allowed to use Tinkercad.
Anymore because of the, yeah, because of privacy.
But we can use Onshape, which is a free software, which I have used in some of my classes. In my eighth grade elective, I would just use Inventor because I do have a laptop cart with teen laptops. So that are, it's a very nice laptop for, of computers. And it does have all the software I need.
Just as a note, I, Laura, I did invite Laura Bascom to be here tonight and she just, tonight didn't work for her, so she is going to come and talk about what she's still at her level and probably in January.
So how, I, I know you tried to carefully conceal it with the incredible variety of stuff you showed us, but it strikes me that you are one person.
You noticed that.
Yeah. So the thing that strikes me about this is, you know, we've made this decision to reduce the credit requirements for graduation specifically to open up more flexibility in everyone's schedule. What in your mind would we need to do if we wanted to, you know, continue to extend more advanced levels of this all the way up through the high school years? I, you had material that kind of covered through the eighth grade and then touched on high school a little bit. What more do you think we would need to do if we wanted to keep extending the opportunity?
Well, thank you for recognizing that, first of all, because I do actually teach four different classes every day and.
Like I said, you really worked hard to hide the fact that you're one person. I was nearly fooled.
A total of actually five courses in the semester. Honestly, what, what I need the most is time. And I don't really have it right now, that's why my classroom is sometimes pretty messy. And I just, I could do a better job with my, I really focus on the middle school students because I actually really, really like them. And that's why I would ever like middle school students so much. But, you know, I, I, it's, it's hard. It's like planning four classes every single day. And my high school courses are at the end of the day and they're, you know, it's a different course, so I teach architecture one day and I have a social entrepreneurship class the next day and something has to give. And it's, I shouldn't say this, but I, I've taught high school for so long, I don't spend as much time planning my high school courses as I do the middle school courses. Kind of like the last thing I do. And also, you know, the, with the assessment, I could be giving a lot more feedback to students. When I had the time, when I taught in other districts, you know, I, I come from Newark, I taught in Newark for several years, that's where I started my teaching career, and I would only have five classes in that two day, uh, one day, we have a rotating schedule similar to this, I had like two preps, one was a study hall and the other one was a prep. And so the study hall, you just kind of check on the kids and then I could use the time to plan the grade. So I was able to give my students really great feedback, which they need in order to improve. And unfortunately, I'm not, I'm just, I have a family of my own at home and I, and I still take work home with me every night. So it would be great to have that time so that I could give the feedback that students need.
I think it's pretty clear you're doing an amazing job as is. It wouldn't be hard for yourself about the high school, like I, once you've done something for a long time, it's easier, it goes a lot faster and you maybe don't realize how good you're still doing it.
I wasn't listening when you said that.
Yeah, it is something I feel more comfortable with, so yeah. I have a lot more kind of in my toolbox, I guess, to pull from than I do with the middle school.
You know, as I hear you talking, I mean, clearly Dan's observation that you're only one person, the only way to change that is to have more than one person engaged. So we, we'd need another of you, I would assume, to make that happen. And then space is the other variable that when your room is used for so many, like as you acknowledged, doing so many things in the same space, it, it becomes challenging, particularly when it's resource heavy. And so the capacity to be able to spread out and have, you know, dedicated spaces for various types of projects, I'm sure would be very beneficial in terms of time management.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And really the way this step over, because I have my middle school classes all in a row in the morning, and so I'm still cleaning up from, and I still have passing time, so I'm still cleaning up for my sixth grade class, when my eighth grade class walks in. It's like I'm just kind of rushing around and Lego pieces are still on the floor and, you know, the kids, they're fixed, right? They do their best and they usually do a great job, but they miss it. So, you know, yeah, it's, it's hard. Honestly, the class is like, we, all the students always say, oh my goodness, this class goes by so fast. When I'm like, okay, five minutes, wait to clean up. And so, you know, a course like this, where we are, who's first heavy, you know, fifty minute, or I'm sorry, sixty minutes, you know, at least an hour would be a really good time frame, just to have a little walk.
I'm trying to figure out how you store all this stuff, architectural stuff, social entrepreneurship stuff, like.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, you could take a walk by my lap, it's interesting.
Thank you so much. I hope you feel better very soon.
Oh, you're welcome.
And yeah, what an amazing job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. Really appreciate you being here tonight.
All right. Unfortunately, we do have to do school board stuff. The exit policy discussion will be the first read of a couple of policies.
Pulling them up.
Make cloud read.
You want me to summarize what it?
So, yeah, I mean, if you wanted, Todd, sorry.
So basically, EHB is our data, our record retention policy. And we realized when we reviewed it compared to the school board association, we did not have a section on disposal of sensitive information, particularly digital information. So ran it by Jason, he agreed that this was what we needed, so this is adding in a section on sensitive, disposal of sensitive materials. And then the KF, the KF policy, we did nothing to it, we just included it because we're proposing changes to the procedural documents. We're proposing getting rid of KFE altogether and replacing it with KFR. Basically what happened was that's just the facility's use policy. And what we discovered was the, the facility's use request form that we were using is actually predates the renovation and the needs that might be needed. So it's, there was a lot of work to make the form better. So you'll see a lot of changes, but it's just, we needed a form that matched what we had and the facilities we have.
The, Todd, hadn't we talked about the KF? There's a section of a paragraph where there's like generic national organizations in there.
Oh, yes.
We were going to like make an edit to that paragraph to make it a little more Newmarket centered.
Thank you for that reminder. Actually, I did have that conversation with Mr. Riley after our meeting and he agreed that no, we don't, the organizations that are listed there have never even requested our building and it would make more sense to have it be generic. So yeah, when we bring it back a second time, I will make sure that there's, there's a fourth, fifth paragraph there that lists a whole bunch of nonprofit organizations. None of them are organizations that have anything to do with Newmarket, so.
My only quibble would be that renters are renters regardless of whether they're an organization. That's, you specify renters and then renter organizations, so, but that's the only, rather silly quibble I have got. We just talked about the renter or renting organization, shooting by your eyes themselves. Whatever.
Yeah, I mean, you could have an individual renting it for some specific purpose or like an organization like.
An organization still rents for it, but.
Right, you're right, you're right.
It's silly, but I had to find something to, for you guys once on.
Well, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or thoughts on, more important thoughts on the policies that I had to share? No?
Just want to thank Dave for his work on it. Yeah. On our document.
And thank you both for, for your work on it. And you mean a lot and you've gone through a ton of policies, which have been great.
And actually, I do, I want to mention Julie Cukonberg has, I've been very actively involved in that one. She worked with Dave on it a lot, so it was very helpful to have her involved.
And next up, no meeting would be complete without Janet Mellon. Here to present something.
You always put me up after a really good presentation, so I just feel a little bit like.
Yeah, I don't know who this order is. I don't know.
Which one would you like to start with? Would you like default budget or?
Whatever you would like.
Okay, well, since you're in the art month here, let's start with fiscal year 26 default budget. As you know, because we are an SVT town, our, instead of the old style town meeting where you deliberated and voted all in one session, we have two sessions. So our first session is our deliberative session where we look at the warrant articles, we can amend articles. But then the actual voting part happens in March separately. So because we have that mechanism, it's important that if a budget were to fail, we wouldn't have a budget unless we had a default budget or something to go back to. So that's the nature of why we calculate the default budget. The statute that governs the default budget is very specific about the things that can be included and must be excluded from the default. So you basically start with your prior approved budget. In this case, it would be the one warrant right now, 2425. And you're allowed to adjust for things that are required by law, legislation. So for example, we mentioned retirement rates change. We obviously would embed those changes in the, the next cycle, we embed those. We're required to provide vocational tuition to any student in Newmarket that's legislated, right? So if we have an increase in our vocational tuition, we can capture that in our default budget. So I've kind of broken it down. The things that are included are any salary and increases that have been previously incurred as a result of contractual agreement. Basically, that's a long way around the warrant, I was saying when you have a multi-year CBA and it goes on the warrant, in future years, all those costs that were on the warrant for all those three years can be captured in the default, even if they're higher than the new warrant. Staffing breakage means that if we have somebody that's, has a salary up here, they leave the district, we bring them in at a lower salary, we would take the actual, the lower. And the vice versa is true as well, because that's another contractual agreement. I already addressed New Hampshire retirement increases. Oddly enough, in fiscal year 26, for the first time in my recollection, they have actually increased slightly from the imported contribution portion. FICA calculations, obviously those would increase year to year because if your salaries change, FICA is simply a calculus off of those salaries. Increases and decreases with insurance premiums that are, we are required to maintain for either legal reasons or to maintain our bond. So obviously we're not going to let property liability insurance lapse on the, on the building. Health insurance and dental insurance costs, premium increases or decreases, wouldn't that be nice? Would be captured in the new budget because we have been obligated to provide benefits to employees. And I have addressed the vocational tuition. Things that are excluded from the default budget. For anyone that's not in a collective bargaining agreement. For anyone that's not in a collective bargaining agreement, your administrators, some of our support staff, any proposed increases in our proposed budget cannot be captured in the default. So they would stay at whatever rate we had in this current year. The NTA, in this particular year, the NTA is in bargaining. Their increases are not captured in our operating budget. They will be in a separate warrant article. We have to remove any proposed new positions. So, for example, if we, if we had proposed a new position in our proposed budget this year, because that wasn't approved as part of the budget last year, we would need to remove it from the default budget, even if it's something we were looking at doing. Shifts in position are okay. If you have somebody that you're re-titling, same body, but you're re-titling it for same, a different purpose, you can keep that. But if it's a whole new position, it must come out. Any open budgeted position that the district is not actively trying to fill, you have to pull it out of, you know, precedent. We had three plus monitors that were in last year's budget. We didn't carry them forward this year, so we can't move them into the default. And finally, any costs associated with the purchase of equipment outside of the annually budgeted replacement cycle that's unlikely to occur in the next fiscal cycle, and probably like one-time expenditures. Some of those have, that kind of concept has changed dramatically, though, with our capital improvement plan. Because if you recall, we have a stack of $100,000 that we're going to put in our budget every year to address payments. Now, we aren't going to obviously be doing the same things every year, but that has been our agreed-upon plan. So there were very few one-time costs I had to pull out because it's all part of that comprehensive plan that was approved. So just high-level, high-level analysis, decreases in, and on page, I'm sorry, on page three, there's actually a little chart where you can see the decreases. So like regular programs, which is our general education, has decreased by $64,000. That's due to the reduction of some positions in our primary operating, in our proposed budget. Special programs, that would be student services, that increased by $430,707. Oh, I forgot to mention, special ed costs are legislated. Those would stay in. So, look, you know, spoiler alert, since most of the increase in our proposed operating budget was from student services, most of those costs carried forward into the default budget as well. I've given just some basic differences to, sometimes the increases have to do from benefit selection changes. People choose a different health plan and we have to capture that. And then our food service operations, our budget has, our expenditure budget has gone up by about $35,000. But remember that food service program is a self-sustaining fund, so there will be equal and offsetting revenues in our budget to cost of that. So we are allowed to capture those increases in expenditures because we're also going to capture the expenditures in progress. And so nutshell, basically, this year, our default budget is very, very close to our proposed budget because, as you recall, we put a lot of effort into keeping that increase very low. The difference between our proposed budget and our default budget is only $50,262. So it's not going to have much of a variance this year. Some years it's bigger, but this year it is not. So does anyone have any questions on that amount?
Nope.
If you haven't already seen it, in the manifest folder that will be coming around, I have the default budget for you to sign in the format that I need to upload to the Department of Labor. So thank you for signing that. And did you want to go on to the warrants?
Sure.
So basically, you saw an early version of this where we kind of copied what we had last year, brought it forward, based on discussions with the board. We went back and had some discussions about internally, about ways that recommendations we might be able to make to help address some of the concerns people had about impact on tax rates and things like that. So the operating article remains the same. We'll be filling in those amounts and those tax impacts. The collective bargaining will remain the same because that's, those amounts are set. What we did make a recommendation to was Article Five, which was our $200,000. It's part of our capital improvement plan that we look to put into capital reserve every year in order to fund our longer-term needs. In the past, we have, that has been a raise and appropriate, meaning it wasn't coming from fund balance. We were actually going to have a tax up on that. However, this year's a little bit unique because, if you recall, we also disbanded the bond fund with the intention of using the $215,000 roughly to offset our principal payment for the bond. We budgeted for the full bond payment. So therefore, we have an extra revenue kind of coming in that we feel that we might be able to repurpose that funding to help in this particular year, which is so tight. So instead of asking for a raise and appropriate, we're saying what we would do is we would fund that article first from remaining fund balance after we close our books for the year. And there is a method to the ordering of these articles, right? The ones that are on, they go in order on the ballot. So this was our most important one that we really felt we could not afford to not fund. So therefore, that comes immediately after the, after the, you know, at the top of the optional types of things. So that would be the first one that would get filled. So that's the only change to Article Five. The amount stays the same. We're just recommending a different funding mechanism.
And I would just highlight the fact that it's the unique circumstances this year that we have that. We may not, depending on where we are a year from now, be able to do it the same way the following year and maintain the level of funding. But we feel comfortable that we can, we can manage it this year.
And then we had, on the original warrant that you looked at earlier, we had two additional articles. One was for special ed and one was for benefits to kind of mitigate areas that we felt we had exposure. And after discussion, when we talked about the two areas that in the coming year we feel we have the greatest exposure, you know, weighing coming against one another, it was clear to us that because of the increasing levels of student services needs across the state, not just in New Market, that that really was our area of greatest exposure. At least for this year, our rates are pretty well locked in on the insurance side because we were looking at making that change to a different vendor. So we felt that we could, for this year, we wouldn't eventually like to return back to that and put some more money in that benefits expendable trust. But we felt we might be able to remove that article for this year and simply fund the special education article from fund balance at $50,000. So we basically kind of redlined that original article that we, you know, wanted to take out for the insurance and benefits trust.
Yeah, we looked at the, the current balance of the insurance and benefits. It's $126,000. And we kind of feel like that three to 5% of the total cost of our benefits is what we'd like to have there. I think this year, it's, the proposed budget's 2.7 million is the total cost. So that would be in the 80 to 135 range. So we're, we're in that spot right now. Obviously, depending on what happens with benefits in the following year, we might make a different recommendation next year. But as Janet said, we feel pretty confident that with the new insurance plan, it's, it looks to be more stable and we're a little less concerned, at least for this year.
So sum total, what we'd be looking to on the warrant when we put it forward to vote would be our operating budget and the teachers' agreement. Those would be the only tax impacts out of the items that we proposed. And obviously, as I said before, this is entirely within the board's discretion. You can raise amounts, lower amounts, remove our warrant articles. You have, you can do all of those things with the exception of the default budget, which is required to be calculated.
And just again, going back to Dan's acknowledgement that the public hearing is January 6th, we have to have our draft warrant to share with them. And we don't have another meeting before the January 6th meeting. So it really would be tonight that we would need to decide what we want to present the warrant.
I appreciate the rigor of analysis into how much we want in certain capital reserve funds. And given the current situation, like financially, I suppose, like in the town, like, to, how to fund these, like recognizing it's not a forever solution, but that based on the circumstances of the year, it seems like a prudent leveraging of resources.
I guess my only thoughts would be, yeah, thank you so much for the work on this, the recommendations. The fund balance amount was $215,000, I think, right? So...
Are you mean the one month?
The bond fund, excuse me.
Yes.
It was $200,000, yeah. So I'm wondering if, when you think about including a $15,000, it strays from our plan that we organize, but it also gives us a little bit of extra flexibility in the following year.
What happens to that 15 if we don't?
Yeah, what do you mean? It would go back to us.
It goes back to the tax burden. But it's, it's very small, but, which is also the reason I'm thinking, maybe we still do want to put a little bit into the, the insurance and benefits expenditures, expendable trust, just because if we do have a tiny bit of flexibility this year, it's potential that we're going to have a lot less, not that we have the time this year, but there's a potential we'll have even less next year. While we have $25,000 maybe to put in it, doesn't it make sense to, you know? Or maybe we put the 15 in from that and maybe the $200,000 CIP or...
Yeah, but we didn't, do we already determine that we needed that amount in the, for improvement based on the...
Well, yeah, so, yeah, absolutely. So what I'm suggesting is we may run into a year where we want to put $200,000 and we can't. But we don't feel comfortable doing it. So if we put a little extra in now, because we know we have this tiny bit of extra income, just the income, but that's a known quantity, maybe it makes sense to add it a tiny bit to give the board future breathing room. It's a very small amount, granted.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm struggling. I'm trying not to overthink this because the reality is no, like, one person out of 500 who goes into the voting booth and reads this is actually going to appreciate what that difference is or where it comes from.
Yeah.
We could make it either one and...
They're going to see it doesn't come from taxation and they're going to be like, that's all.
Right, exactly. So the, the bigger question to me is actually, okay, well, if I've got 15 grand, does it do me more good to have it in the building fund or the insurance fund? Just thinking very short-term, the insurance fund, it probably is, is more of a risk mitigant than adding 15,000 into the building fund.
If we wanted to limit it to 215, I totally agree with you.
So you're suggesting adding back article, the former, or article, the former Article VII at 15K?
No, I'm not suggesting...
Gary, is that you saying if we were going to do an Article VII, 15,000?
15K is a drop in the bucket in the CIP where, the capital reserve funds, where it is actually a measurable amount in the insurance capital reserve fund.
Yeah, I mean, my point is, and I'm not swearing 15,000 is the right number, but if you have 15,000, where does it do you the most good to put it?
I mean, noted that, first, that 15 is going actually to the special education trust fund. It would like contribute to that.
That's a one, where do we put it?
I mean, I, that seems like the highest risk.
Yeah, I think the order is correct.
The order is absolutely correct in my opinion.
I would say in terms of, when I, when I think of my biggest concerns in terms of managing the budget, next year it's going to be in the student services realm. That's, that's where we're most likely to get an unexpected cost. In the, in the health insurance, while we've, we've got a very solid rate coming into next year that we've predicted for, and what's in there now would probably be enough for any potential ups because people made different benefit selections. So if I were going to put more money in, I think I'd put it in the special education fund just because that's the place that we really have no control. A student could move in tomorrow that we don't even know yet that has an out-of-district placement of 300,000 and we don't really have the flexibility there as much.
But being...
So change it to 65, you're saying? That's the 15 to the 50?
Well, I think that's what Todd is proposing along with...
I mean, I'm okay with that. I mean, like, it's, if it's not, it's not going to taxation.
It's going to be one or the other.
Yeah.
I know there's more.
Put the mon, put the money where we've got the most risk.
Yeah.
Totally, definitely, yeah.
So my question then becomes, and I know I've been a very loud proponent of the capital reserve and capital improvement plan, is the order correct to have that in advance of special education trust fund?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so because without, if, if, just like if you miss a mortgage payment on a 30, 30 or 40-year mortgage in the early years, that has a way greater impact on your ending plan. And we do have money in the special education trust fund. We're moving towards a targeted goal. This will help us continue moving towards that targeted goal. But the one I fear would be if we, something, something were to happen and we were not able to fund the capital reserve. Like, it's risky for us not to do that because we're actually then obligating ourselves to raise an appropriate more money in future years and dramatically more money down the road if we can.
Yeah, that fund is so new that, yeah, I agree. The CIP fund, so...
And the other thing, candidly, if you think, well, what could happen that would leave us with no fund balance at the end of the year? The most likely thing is an out-of-district placement in special ed, so it...
I'd support putting, not adding the old Article VII back in, but putting the 15, putting 15K into the special education.
I agree.
Maybe you have to have the 75.
65.
65, yeah.
Do we hear 80? Do we hear 85? Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
I'm good.
Thank you very much for indicating my flippes tonight.
Thank you.
I do believe, thank you so much.
Run away, run away quickly.
Thank you.
I do believe, thank you so much.
Run away, run away quickly.
All right, next up, we have a couple of donations to acknowledge. I'm fortunate enough to receive some money. $500 from the Special Olympics in New Hampshire. Did you mark anything? As you remarked to...
We have, for our, we have a special Olympics team.
Oh, special Olympics, okay, perfect. And then also there was a $1,000 donation to the Food Service Department to help students from negative balance and, or mutual damage with negative balance. So thank you very much to both donors. And we'll head right into actified...
Gary, Olivia, do you want to get out of here before we start voting or? It's getting kind of late, so I'm just mindful of your time, okay?
Dedication to this body. This austere body. No, we're tossing 15 here and there.
Let's seek a motion to approve the December 5th minutes.
So moved, second.
Motion by Phil Zaro, second by Dan Spen. Any discussion? Format still good?
It is.
Yeah, very easy to read.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
And no inay and one abstention, thank you. Let's seek a motion to...
The policy was a first read. We shouldn't be approving it yet, should we?
Yeah, you don't have to approve. Accept as a first read is sort of what we do. But you're right, you're not approving it. Yep.
Seek a motion to approve the Improv Group's trip to Boston.
Yeah, so moved.
Second, I want to go to...
Dan, second by Phil, he's volunteering a chaperone.
Yeah, well, hold on now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're going to the Blue Man Group, by the way.
Oh, nice.
Haven't seen that in a long time.
Never seen it.
It's wonderful.
Never had call.
They TP your head, it's amazing.
Someone have a manifest to share?
A motion to approve the manifest in the amount of $1,789,965.80.
I need a second bite. Motion by Phil, second bite. Amy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the best for last?
We already...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have the warrants to...
I was just going to say, that was what I'm asking, putting one vote on that warrant.
Seek a motion to approve the warrant is presented tonight and revised.
So moved, second. So just so we're clear, with the $65,000 revision to Article Six. All right. Six, I think, is the one.
Yeah, you're right. Who seconded that, I apologize?
Yeah, I think I did, sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And last, for my least, so Amy, weren't here last... And last, not least, so Amy, weren't here last time, so we held off on voting on the NTA contract.
Oh, thank you.
So let's seek a motion to approve the NTA contract.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Amy Siltan. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, both of you, for all the time you put in on that, that...
It was interesting.
Thank you to everyone involved, and they're going to...
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
There has been some discussion about some other districts that have gone to mediation and weren't able to reach an agreement, so it makes me, makes me feel extra proud of the teams that were there.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And no non-meeting that I'm aware of. No? Seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 6:41. Wow.
I will see you all next year.